It is now, I believe, eleven, eleven thirty-one. Eleven thirty-one, uh, invocation. Let's, um, let's call upon, uh, Tom, Senator Yolotel for to give us an invocation today. All right, thank you, uh, protocol starting with black lodge.
White Clay, here, black lodge.
Spotted, Shibirin', Leeley.
White Clay, black lodge here.
No, we lodge grass here.
Yolotel, lodge grass here.
Roll one.
Lodge grass.
Not a great big one.
Boyer, big one.
It's Sanjil, we could not.
Good luck, he goes to God, but charge it here.
Hellbairn, mighty field here.
Alden, legal here.
Deep Green, Allen, right here.
Thirteen present.
We've got thirteen present, we have a forum. I'd like to recognize Executive Vice Chairman, I believe he's here. Uh, visiting guest. I'd welcome you guys to our special session today. Uh, Legal Dennis from Executive's here, I believe. Um, going on with number three. Review and adoption of agenda, I believe. We were to entertain, um, Cody, Cody Ware, and his confirmation if he's can make it back on the head out. If he is there at the time, we can make that motion, bring that confirmation out. I believe that's ready, so. Uh, new business. I'll turn it forward to who's gonna read this in record, Frank. Dennis? Full recognizes, uh, Mr. Birdon from Executive, read this into the record.
Speaker, three, review, adoption of agenda.
Need a motion.
Do need a motion, there's no amendments, so. Okay, I guess we do need a, uh, motion for review and adoption of agendas, so at this time, can I get a motion? Or review and adoption of the motion by Senator North, second, second spot, question. Yolotel, all in favor, reviewing and adopting agenda, raise your right hand. All no, abstain, unanimous, all right. Full recognizes, Mr. Birdon.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, senators, honored guests, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman. This is a joint action resolution of the Co-Tribal Legislature and the Co-Tribal Executive Branch entitled Resolution Approving Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2018 Co-Tribal Budget Authorizing Expenditure of LBBP Lease Revenues for Important Community Programs and Services.
Can I get a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt, Senator North, free, second, second. Senator O'Kro, go ahead.
Whereas Article Four, Section Three D of the Co-Tribal Constitution and Bylaws requires the Executive Branch of the Co-Tribal Government to prepare an annual budget for the operation of the tribal government, including separate budgets for the legislative and judicial branches, for approval by the legislative branch and the Secretary of the Interior. And whereas Article Five, Section Two E of the Constitution empowers the legislative branch to grant final approval or disapproval of the annual budget prepared by the executive branch. And whereas CLB seventeen oh four, providing approval for the FY two thousand eighteen Co-Tribal budget was enacted by the legislature on October twelfth, two thousand seventeen, and approved by the Chairman of the Executive Branch on November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. And whereas the Co-Trib is currently working its way out of a substantial financial deficit and lacks the resources required to fully finance certain programs for and/or services to Co-Tribal members and communities, such as the Head Start Program, Summer Youth Employment Program, Co-Elders Benefits, and outstanding solid waste debt. And whereas there is currently an estimated one million eight hundred thousand in the special proceeds of labor account held by the BIA Office of Special Trustee, consisting of lease revenue from land buyback program lands, LBBP lease revenue. And whereas Section One of CLB fifteen oh six passed and approved July sixteen, two thousand fifteen, identifies that LBBP lease revenues are dedicated to the following uses: the purchase of lands and interest in lands for purposes of tribal economic development, for repairs, improvements, and initial working capital for tribal economic development projects, and as security collateral and/or a source of repayment for loans or other types of financing. And whereas Section Three of CLB fifteen oh six provides authorization for and direction to the Secretary of the Interior acting through the Bureau of Indian Affairs and the Office of Special Trustee for American Indians to, among other things, remit such LBBP lease revenues to the Co-Trib for use pursuant to CLB fifteen oh six and other applicable tribal law as determined and administered by the Co-Trib in its sole discretion. And whereas the legislative and executive branches have determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe, its members, and the reservation community to amend the FY two thousand eighteen budget in order to provide the financial resources required for the Co-Trib to support the important programs and services identified herein, despite the fact they are not tied to tribal economic development or land purchases. Now therefore be enacted by the Co-Tribal Legislature and the Co-Tribal Executive Branch. Section One, that the expenditure by the Executive Branch of the remaining one point eight million of the LBBP lease revenue is hereby authorized as follows. Subsection A, the sum of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for payment of the June and July two thousand eighteen senior benefit. Subsection B, the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for sustaining the operations of the Co-Tribal Head Start Program. Subsection C, the sum of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for payment to Big Horn County in satisfaction of of the tribe's outstanding solid waste debt. Subsection D, the sum of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to fund a summer youth employment program in each district. Section Two, that the FY two thousand eighteen tribal budget approved by CLB seventeen oh four is hereby amended to approve additional expenditures from the LBBP lease revenues as authorized by this resolution. Section Three, that the authorization granted hearing is effective immediately on the date of approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Dennis, uh, we'll start our third minute presentation.
Okay, uh, well, I don't have a lot to say, basically, the, uh, Co-Trib, I think it's no mystery that the Co-Trib is in a financial, uh, deficit right now. And there's this LBBP lease revenue funding that has become available for expenditure, and it's generally supposed to be expended on economic development projects or land purchases, um, and other things related to economic development, however, in the bill that authorized, um, or identified that the LBBP lease revenue was to be dedicated to those purposes, there is also a, uh, an exception for other applicable tribal laws. And it identifies specifically that the Co-Trib has the sole discretion to determine how those revenues are used. So what we're looking for here is basically an exception to the general purpose, uh, that these funds would normally be used for, uh, for this one time to help bring up the, uh, programs identified herein. There, um, have been subsequent amendments as well, and I'm not sure when we'll discuss those, but just wanted to identify that, that the the resolution that I read was the one that was introduced by the Executive Branch. Thank you.
Still, thirty minute presentation, Frank, you want to say something, anything?
Thank you, Speaker. Secretary, body, guests, Vice Chair. When, like Dennis said, this is available for us for, you know, to be able to use it for certain things, and I think that we're in a position right now to where it would be pertinent to use these in a wise manner to be able to benefit the whole, um, membership. And to, like you said, we do have amendments and we're, um, and we'll be getting to that, but, you know, for the most part, um, you know, it's money is lease revenue that, you know, came from land buyback and, you know, it's to benefit our membership, it should be our first priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Thirty minute, so. Going once, going twice, will, um, will to designate a committee for his, uh, committee. Pro recommendation, actually, so full recognizes, Senator White, go ahead.
Um, yeah, we had numerous meetings about this, um, going through. We, the last one was on July twentieth, twenty eighteen. We had ten members present, um, and it was unanimous on a vote to for approval, committee, to send to floor.
Thank you, coming from committee, it was a unanimous vote for approval. So the floor is open for debate now. We need debate. Senator Stone.
Thank you, uh, Speaker, Secretary, body, guests, Vice Chair. Which one are we gonna send here? The one that was just read, or Frank's got a amendment to that one?
Yeah, he's got a substitute version, so once we get to amendment section, then we'll introduce his, um, substitute version. But we just have to read this one because this was the first one they introduced, so.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
Senator O'Kro.
Thank, thank, thank you. Yeah. We have a two thousand eighteen budget, and, um, you know, in that, we have outer, outer fund, we have, uh, employees that they should pay, they didn't know how to mismanage their money, they wouldn't be in a situation. You know, they probably over hired, and this money is supposed to be used for this, we gotta go, it's supposed to be used for land purchases. But this was a tough amount, I believe you're here, because you know, I'm, I'm all in, I'm all in for the elders, but you know, all this other stuff, like employees paying, that should have been dealt with before, they should have laid off before they even gone down there, you know. I just can't see why they didn't go by their budget when we passed it. For example, is, um, you know, district funds, when we passed that budget here, they didn't, um, they just took it out over there. I think that should have been a budget amendment. But, you know, they, now they're in the hole, and they want us to down them out with. And like you said, I'm all in for the elders, but, you know, all this other stuff. Shouldn't be using it for, should be using it for land purchases, but it's a tough one to go by, and this is my, um, comment on that link here.
Vice Chair, I believe, have a comment?
Yeah. Well, it's actually a question for, you know, the, uh, Senator, uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, and members of the body, and skid gift. Uh, my question was, uh, part of this is gonna be for also the Executive Branch, I'm not the Executive Branch, but it's the Executive Branch employees, but part of the tribal employees is the, uh, judicial branch, I don't think nobody asked that question. So the question goes to the committee, uh, because they haven't got paid either in a long time. So, uh, that, that's, you know, a fair question, good question. And I know that, uh, uh, there was a question that I had, and Speaker, just make a comment on that, um, it says economic development for the use of the LBB money. Uh, what is two hundred and forty-six thousand acres? That was, uh, we, for a hundred and thirty million, we bought two hundred and forty-six thousand acres, so we had a trouble, Co-Trib, which is a revenue now. And that was, I guess, abroad, is what you told me, uh, from the legal, a legal opinion, uh, is to purchase two things, to be, to use this LBB money, and what, what's the exact number, one point eight seven? One point eight seven. Uh, in the LBB funds, the tribal, from tribal revenues, from lease revenues is what it is. And so that question, to kind of answer, Senator, uh, I asked the same question, that this money should be directly used for those two things, economic development and to purchase land. And the economic development is broad, I guess it's a broad until you specifically, uh, spell out what do you want to use, what, what does economic development means, define it, I guess. But it's very, very a broad question, so.
Thank you, you know what, we're in debate, so. Going once, going twice, sold. I'll turn the floor over to Senator White, play on his, uh, substitute version now.
Alrighty, um, thank you, Speaker. Body, guests, Vice Chair, um, I'll just go off and start reading the, uh, the substitute version. Do that in motion. Make motion to accept the substitute version. Okay, alright. Joint action resolution of the Co-Tribal Legislature and the Co-Tribal Executive Branch entitled Resolution Approving Amendments to the Fiscal Year two thousand eighteen Co-Tribal Budget Authorizing Expenditure of LBBP Lease Revenues for Important Community Programs and Services. Whereas Article Four, Section Three, Subsection D of the Co-Tribal Constitution and Bylaws requires the Executive Branch of the Co-Tribal Government to prepare an annual budget for the operations of tribal government, including separate budgets for the legislative and judicial branches for approval by the legislative branch, the Secretary of the Interior. And whereas Article Five, Section Two, Subsection D of the Co, the Constitution empowers the legislative branch to grant final approval, artist approval of the annual budget prepared by the executive branch. Whereas CLB seventeen national four, providing approval of the FY two thousand eighteen Co-Tribal Budget was enacted by legislature on October twelfth, twenty seventeen, and approved by the Chairman of the Executive Branch on November seventeenth, twenty seventeen. Whereas the Co-Trib currently wait, working its way out of substantial financial deficit and lack of resources required to fully finance certain programs for and/or services to Co-Tribal members and communities, such as Head Start Program, Summer Youth Employment Program, Co-Elders Benefit, and outstanding solid waste debt. And whereas there is currently an estimated one million eight hundred thousand in the special proceeds of labor account held by the BIA Office of Special Trustees of lease revenues from land buyback program lands, LBBP lease revenue. And whereas Section One of CLB fifteen oh six passed and approved July sixteen, twenty fifteen, identifies that LBBP lease revenues are dedicated to the following leases: the per, purchase of lands and interest in lands for purposes of the tribal economic development, for repairs, improvements, and initial working capital for a tro, for tribal economic development projects, and has security collateral and/or a source of repayment for loans or other types of financing. And whereas Section Three of CLB fifteen dash oh six provides authorization for and direction to the Secretary of Interior acting through the Bureau of Indian Affairs, the Office of the Special Trustee for American Indians to, among other things, remit such LBBP lease revenues to the Co-Trib for use pursuant to CLB fifteen national six and other applicable tribal law as determined and administered by the Co-Trib in its sole discretion. And whereas the legislative and executive branches have determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe, its members, and the reservation community to amend the FY two thousand eighteen budget in order to box, to provide the financial resources required for the Co-Trib to support the important programs and services identified herein, despite the fact that they are not tied to tribal economic development, our land purchase pursuant to the tribe's discretionary authority identified in CLB fifteen national six. Now therefore be enacted by the Co-Trib Legislature and the Co-Trib Executive Branch, that the expenditure of the Executive Branch of the remaining one point eight million of the LBBP lease revenue is hereby authorized as follows. Subsection A, bullets funeral home to pay fully debts due and owing, owing to remove the threat of collection from our tribal members suffering from the loss of loved ones, two hundred and twenty thousand. B, doll funeral home to pay fully debts due and owing, and to remove the threat of collection from our tribal members suffering from the loss of loved ones, twenty thousand. C, elders fund any fulfillment of the tribe's continuing obligation to assist the valued elders of the tribe for two months payment due and one month in reserve, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred. Employees of the Co-Trib value assets for continuation of the tribe's inheritance, shall obtain, many of whom have worked without pay for numerous pay periods, two hundred thousand. C, Big Horn County slash Republic for solid waste and whose services has been deeply affected by the tribe's value paid bill, and as a result, traction debris has accumulated around reservation, causing health and safety concerns to our tribal members and guests, thirty-six thousand, four hundred. For each district, for the benefit of the district members and to be paid out by district representatives for the emergency requests received by each member, five thousand, totaling thirty thousand, and distribution of such funds subject to rules established by the district. G, Co-Tribal Head Start Program for sustaining operations in the sum of five hundred thousand. H, Executive Branch will dismiss Co-Tribal appellate case number thirteen dash zero zero two and read the matter of Cedric Black Eagle in his capacity as Chairman of the Co-Trib versus Manon Cover, his is up, Senior, in his official capacity as Speaker of the House of the Co-Tribal Legislature. Section Two.
Copy, Stone, is that?
That the FY two thousand eighteen tribal budget approved by CLB seventeen dash oh four is hereby amended to approve additional expenditures from the LBBP lease revenues as authorized by this resolution. Section Three, that the authorization granted hearing is effective immediately on the date of approval of this resolution. Section Four, that the Secretary of Interior acting through the Bureau of Indian Affairs and the Office of Special Trustee for American Indians shall be hereby is requested and directed to remit, remit the revenues identified herein for the specific one-time discretionary non-economic development-related expenditures authorized in this joint action resolution.
Now, make that in a motion now.
Yes, I'd like a motion to adopt this substitute version.
Motion's on the floor, can you, to adopt this, uh, substitute person, can you, second? Second, Senator North, free, question? Question, Alex, all in favor of, um, adopting the substitute version, signify by raising your hand. All those no? Abstain? Fourteen, uh, fourteen zero zero. Okay, so we, we do got the sub, substitute version. Alright, let's make a motion, I believe that's it, within, within there, so. Recognize Senator White Clay, again.
So this is our substitute version. And, you know, we went through this, we went through this, and we prioritize within the body for this, and, you know, the most important thing, I think, that we want to do is that we're trying to help everybody with limited funds. And with that, you know, we should the top three things, I think we should be taking care of is our elders, our kids, and our loved ones that passed away. So with that, you know, this is our substitute version, um, we went through it with Executive Legal, we went through it with, um, Chairman. And um, amendments. Um, and then, you know, we went through this, we voted out in committee, we got several committee meetings, we tried to line it out, and I think this amount that we got, everything that we separated is, uh, um, show that we can work together to better the membership, thank you.
Okay, with that, we need a motion now to, uh, get this to the floor, so. See who wants to make that motion. Senator.
For a murder. That'll be, uh, put you on your voting to waive second meeting, we have a vote.
Waive second reading, move on to the floor, call vote with substitute version.
With amendments.
Amendments. Full recognizes Senator North, free.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I make a motion to waive second meeting and, 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 and.
With amendments.
With amendments.
Okay, so motion's on the floor to, uh, waive second reading, vote on the floor, call vote with amendments. Can I get a, uh, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Who, who was the second on that? Laura, Clay's second. Second, okay, O'Kro had a second on that. All in favor of sending it to the fourth, final call vote, signify by raising your right hand.
Keep going.
All those no's? Abstain? I don't know. So motion carries, uh, roll call, vote, black lodge. Take it away.
Senator White Clay, black lodge, yes.
Spotted, Shibirin', ah.
White Clay, yes.
Holden, Reno, yes.
No, me. Alchra's, yes.
Yolotel, lodge grass, yes.
Roll one, lodge grass, no.
Not a great big one, yes.
Boyer, big horn, yes.
White, bias, some blazing.
Boyer, big horn, yes.
I would zero, yes.
It's Sanjil, we could not. Good luck, he goes to God, charge it, ah. Hellbairn, mighty field. Yes.
Alden, big one, yes.
Deep Green, El Green, yes. Total is fourteen, yes, one no, zero abstain.
Fourteen, yes, one no, zero abstaining, this bill is gonna come along, JR. Say anything, Dennis, Frank? Just, I'll maybe make a little bit of comments, like you said, uh, you know, that, uh, seniors, especially they there was two, uh, payments in there that we put in there, and also one more because August is right there too, so now, uh, the process of getting it over to BIA, we get our signatures here. And, uh, from what I understand, couple, couple days on, uh, let's say, before they start releasing checks, I believe, so. Um, Chairman, do you have any words to say on this one?
Thank you, Speaker, uh, Secretary, Vice Chair, body, guests, as you all know, that the tribe's, uh, problems financially from, uh, history of, uh, expanding, overextending has now come and brought us to this point, and I I do believe we had a common goal to, uh, reach out for our youth and the elder. And, uh, this is breakthrough today, that knowing, uh, we can work together and ensure that our people are taken care of, I hope.
Thank you, any more comments, collective comments? Going once, going twice? Sold, that's it, we don't have any other, um, items on the agenda, we had, uh, Mr. Ware, but he, he had to leave, so. I think I get a motion to adjourn. Motion by Senator, um, JR, O'Kro to adjourn, it's going to second. Second, Boyer, all in favor, signify by raising your, uh. There's one. Thank you, everyone, for showing up today and, uh, getting this. There's one, thank you everyone for showing up today and getting this finished up.